Okay, all right, so now being 6:15, I'll tell the open session of the Board of Selectmen to order Monday, January 27. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our agenda is to discuss the transfer station sticker issue that has continued from, it was December, wasn't it, Liz, of 2019?
Correct.
December of 2019. All right, so we met, we talked about the town's sticker policy, that stickers are to be applied, adhered to the window of the vehicle. Liz, I believe you had a follow-up meeting to discuss it as well?
On December 2nd.
And then we were under the impression that this was squared away, and now we're talking about it again. So my question is, you know, we thought we were clear on the policy, why are we talking about this again? I think that's a fair question, sure.
I have put the sticker on my car. I've never gone to the dump without a sticker on my car, ever, not once, okay? Before the last year until Arthur over there said, "You can't..." I used to have it in a little plastic thing in my glove compartment. He said, "You gotta have a sticker on the car." If you want me to go back two months when I was here the last time, six, eight weeks, whatever it was, I put the sticker on the outside of the car, and it's always been there. And every time I've gone to the dump, except for last week, I never was harassed by Art and his other person working there at all. Last week I went there, and we were both outside by coincidence, and I went to the furthest dump of the trash thing, and they just stared at me, and I don't know what happened when I left. I saw it in my rearview mirror, one of them, there was only one of them, I said, "Maybe they took a picture," which is good, because my sticker has always been there, and I hope they did take a picture of it, because I have pictures of where the sticker is, and I, there's nothing more I could do. I've been singled out by these two people, and when it came to arguing about, when they started harassing me, people at the dumps said, "Stick to your guns, you didn't do anything wrong, and your sticker is fine," and those people are jerks. This is what they told me before that. I've always had the sticker on my car. I have nothing to apologize, my sticker's always been there.
All right, well, I think we've gotten conflicting information that the sticker has not been on the vehicle. Well, the thing is, I know them very well too, and I've served on a lot of committees with them.
You're a liar.
I'm not calling anyone a liar, but I know these, the people that work at the transfer station very well, and they're longtime employees of the town, and I've served with them on numerous committees. So I have a lot of faith in what they're telling me. So, I mean, that's my question, is I just don't know, we're getting reports that the sticker's not adhered to the car. You're saying it is?
Did they take a picture? I hope they took a picture of my car, because I have a picture of the car, and when the police came one time, they called the police twice on me, the police noticed that I did have a sticker, and there's a report on the, when they came. I can't make this up, the police came, and there's a report.
Okay, all right, I have not seen the police report.
And I made sure that he looked at the sticker on my car when they came.
All right, well, I have seen a picture of the vehicle, and it didn't have the sticker on it.
Wait, let me see the picture, and I'll show you the picture where it is on my car.
Do you have a picture of it on your car?
Right here, and I'll show you the picture of it if I may.
Sure.
I've got three or four pictures.
So it's permanently attached to the window?
It's always been there. Now, give me, give me the other pictures, I want to show one. Here. Can I come up?
Sure.
This is my car. They've always been in the booth, in the little house here, okay? That's, that's it from the side, where they'd see it from the side.
All right, so where's the sticker?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not near it.
Okay.
This is, it's a Jeep, and the window is up.
Okay.
And the sticker is right there, and it's always been there, from day one.
So it's back by the rear tire?
Then, the driver's rear side.
Where is the sticker on this?
See it right there?
It's outside, right there.
It's right next to the tire.
Driver's side. And that's the designated spot?
I assume that's where it's always been for the rest...
No, I think it's on the side.
I had it here before, I had it here on my old sticker, and I put it on the outside, and it blew away. I had to buy a new sticker.
Okay.
So when I put it on the outside, it blew off, and I had to order another sticker. It was on the inside, it was on the inside, and they wanted it on the outside.
Right.
So I put it on the outside, and between moving the sticker three or four times, five times, it didn't stick anymore, so I used scotch tape on it. This is stuck on permanently for the last six, seven, eight weeks.
Okay.
This is the sticker, and I, nothing more to say. And my window is, my, if the window was up, I don't know if they'd even see it, because us, but that's where it is.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it if the window was up.
That's where it is, and it's always been there. I never came to the dump without a sticker.
Okay. Do you have questions?
I hope, I see a picture, I hope they took a picture of my car.
Okay, all right, we'll see.
I have no idea.
So just for some clarification from transfer station people, the place where the sticker is supposed to be is?
Visible.
What's that?
Visible.
Visible, not on the back, but on the side?
It should be on the driver's side, rear window. Some people choose to put it on the side, rear window, because they may have something, one of those back rack things on a pickup truck or whatever, so you couldn't see it anyway. But it's behind the, on the driver's side, rear window, where it's visible, and stuck on permanently.
Permanently stuck on the outside?
The outside.
And you feel, Mark, that it is permanently attached to the outside?
Always been for the last six, seven weeks.
So the pictures you're...
On the inside, side window before that, when I put it on the outside, it blew off, and I had to order another sticker at that point. And when we came here about two months ago, in fact, my wife put it, put it there for me, and her ex bought it.
And out that time, and certainly, certainly, Liz said, we said, "Do you want to go outside?" And Liz said, "No, I mean, of course, the utility is..."
They never came up to me, no one ever came up to me in the last two months. You had to ask Art, or the other guy.
I think that's the thing, he, they weren't out there, so it came as a surprise, like, why would we keep this other letter? Like, we did what we were supposed to do, and now we're getting more letters.
More harassment.
So, but the sticker now is on the rear window?
On the rear window. It's always been there for like six, seven weeks before that it was on a...
But we're hearing that the required location, or the recommended location, is not the rear window, but the side window?
No, the rear or the side.
Either one.
So either or.
If there's a back rack or something, or a fuel can anywhere that have on the rear, you can put it on the side window.
It was on the rear or the side?
As we look at the driver's side, rear of the car, either the side or the back, we can see it, and it's on the outside. The tinted is so dark, on some vehicles, we can't see it.
Right.
Unless you get within three inches of it. Now, we get, and they can't be taped on, because we get people, one fellow said, "Oh, I borrowed the sticker from my sister, she lives in town, but I live in Halifax."
That sucks.
And that's why it's gotta be permanently affixed. And if you require that of one person, you must require it of everyone. You can't be selectively enforcing things.
Absolutely.
I fully agree, absolutely. That's the reason why it should be permanently fixed, this particular, you know, letter. It validated what we were saying all along, they, it's personal, and decided to send the letter out.
If you didn't see the sticker, why didn't you come up to me?
We offered six, eight weeks ago, come, come right outside, and certainly, it's not so dark that you can't see it. You know, one of them could have come up and said, "Look, we know it's been an issue, you know, or taken a picture. I don't understand." To me, the whole thing just validates, they decided to send the letter out. I mean, it's been here 25 years, no one has ever, we've never had an issue.
And the reason they're signaling out, I let them know what, how I felt about it, because I was being harassed all along about that. And I told them I wasn't going to be bullied, I had my sticker here, and he said it was on the inside, it gotta be on the outside. So when I put it on the outside, it blew off like a month later, I can't remember when it was. You can look at my records, I had to buy a new sticker.
Okay, well, Liz did confirm December 2nd, the sticker was on the vehicle, but we do have a couple of images, and I don't know when these were taken, Art, but the, there is no sticker on the vehicle.
One was July 2nd.
Okay, so those were after we met.
And one was December, January, I believe it's the 11th, I got the date on my phone.
Well, look at the pictures in actual, please.
All right, and I'd like to see your pictures too, Art, the one, the recent one, from January.
That's that one.
Which is, which one is the January? This one is the January one?
Yes.
All right, and I don't see a sticker on the...
Is it on the back of my car? It's always been?
No, there is no sticker in the place where it's shown. It's the same photo, and there is no sticker there.
I don't know.
Well, and that's, sir, that's, that's the issue at hand, is that the sticker is required, but there have been numerous sightings that the sticker has not been on the vehicle. So that's...
By who?
By the people that work at the, the transfer station. There's a picture at the transfer station.
On January 4th.
So this was taken on January 4th.
Can I see the picture?
Yeah, absolutely, and there's no sticker on the vehicle.
The sticker, at that point, when it was on the inside, was right over here, the sticker. Why didn't they just take a...
Well, this was after we met, December 2nd.
Is this January?
That's January 4th.
You can see it on, on his phone, it shows the dates.
Okay.
That is not possible.
Not possible.
It's not possible.
And that was when you indicated it was on the outside of the vehicle, and there's clearly no sticker, so...
If we're talking this recent timeframe, I would swear to you, it's not possible.
It's not possible. The sticker was here originally, over here, and when I put it on the outside, it blew off over here. I ordered another sticker, I came here two months ago, and they said they wouldn't harass me, and they didn't. They always been in the house, you can see a screen, they, this is probably a screen door, I don't know what it is, or a screen window. My sticker has always been over here, I don't know when...
Okay, all right.
So, Art, when does the sticker expire? The present sticker we're talking about, when does that expire?
It's a 2019 sticker, and new stickers, 2020s are on sale now.
Stickers are on sale now.
These stickers, they can still get into the transfer station until March 31st, 2020.
So, just so I'm getting the picture, the Lucheskis feel like there is a sticker attached in the proper location on the outside, permanently attached. Is that right? Is that...
That is correct. Anyone is welcome to have a flash...
It's been there for two months.
So, I mean, just so we can move forward, I mean, you're comfortable that you are in compliance?
I always thought I was compliant.
And, Art, if, if in fact there is now this 2019 sticker affixed in the appropriate location on the outside of the vehicle, then they would be in compliance, if it's there now, as they described?
When does it disappear again?
How do you remove?
One at a time.
Okay. First of all, I object to the word harassment. Vehemently object to that. We are not harassing anyone. We have sent letters to numerous people in town who did not want to put a sticker on it, an attorney and others. They got the letter from the highway superintendent, boom, the sticker was on. Only Mr. Lucheski refused to put the sticker on. And everybody here is not a liar. We have seen it, and that there's no sticker there. Now, if it's on the inside, and it's that dark glass, we can't see it. That's not possible. And for, and just to correct Mr. Lucheski, we did not call the police twice. We called it once, when Mr. Weichel came back, apparently Mr. Lucheski was having a heated discussion with him. Mr. Weichel did the right thing, walked away to defuse the situation.
You called your son a bitch.
And Mr. Lucheski said, "Get back here, a-hole." Okay? Mr. Weichel walked back to me by the, by the building and said, "Call 911." He must have been concerned about his own safety. And I will air every time on the side of the safety of the people, the workers, there are state police officers that are stabbed, police officers that are shot, God knows what goes on in this world, and I'd rather air on the side across it.
Well, when the police came, they saw my sticker.
Sir, sir.
Harry was stuck.
And, but, this is not harassment, because we, every single sticker, Jim, had one Saturday morning. The guy came in, "No sticker. You have a sticker, sir?" "Yeah, Kingston, but I live just down the street, it's closer for me to come here." So, we're still asking, to this, to this day, we're asking everybody. So nobody's being singled out, it's just some people didn't do it. And then we have some folks that have actually taped it on the outside of the rear window, not realizing you can peel it off, and it's self-adhesive. Okay, that's cool, so we help people. But there is no harassment, none whatsoever, from any of our people.
Sorry, Harry, you had your hand up?
Because the day that he and I had our little discussion, there was a sticker on the vehicle. It was on the rear window, inside. The windows are tinted, I had to get within 10 inches to be able to see it. I started to walk away when I said, "You don't have a sticker." He says, "That's when he called me a name, he says, 'Look at it.'" I walked back, I looked at it, yes, there was a sticker on the inside face of the rear window.
That's right.
Whether it was affixed or not, I don't know. I could barely see it when standing next to the car. You can't expect us to walk up to every single car and do that to try to see it. That's when, when I walked away, that's when he called me a name.
So when was, when was that, Harry?
That was in April.
Okay, so the stick, he had a sticker, but it wasn't, it wasn't on the outside of the, the window, like it's supposed to be? Okay, okay.
There's certainly, it is some credibility to both, you know? A lot of what Art said, I agree, we need to look at time, there's a lot of violence, so I'm not trying to say that. I think a lot is, stories have emerged from prior to the December meeting, but since that meeting with Liz, we said the sticker is on the outside, permanently. It's back, it's stuck, you can't remove that and re-adhere it.
Right.
So that, I think, start getting back to the other story, whether, you know, either side, or instead of up, it, we're getting, no, the, the reason for the words harassment or being singled out, the reason why that's being brought up, and again, I want to hold back, but it was working in cahoots. There was resentment, it was personal, definitely it was being singled out. Maybe harassment is not exactly the right word, whether it's that, singled out. The point is, since that December meeting, the sticker is on the outside, flat, you know, is the name of the vehicle.
He's right about what the last fellow said, it was on the inside, he said, "You don't have a sticker." I said, "Here, here's a sticker right here." He says, "It doesn't count because it's not on the outside," and he walked away. That's what happened.
Well, it needs to be visible for them, and I...
And I showed him the sticker was on, here's a sticker, he says, "It doesn't count because it's on the inside." This is like in five months ago, six months ago.
Okay, well, I don't think you are being harassed. I think anybody who doesn't have their sticker on is going to be approached by these guys, and they all may feel like they're being harassed, but you're not, they're enforcing the rules. And everyone needs to have their sticker visible in order for the transfer station to function properly.
I agree.
So it costs us a lot of money to run the station, and they, there's oversight, and these guys are responsible for it, and we've asked them to enforce those rules, to make sure that everyone who's using it has purchased a sticker, because it's, it's not a moneymaker for us. We're losing money on the transfer station.
So, I thought we got a fresh start, six, seven weeks ago, when we talked to Elizabeth, and we went out there and we put it right where it is now, and that's, that's where it's been. Basically, we said, "Let bygones be guide, bygones," something like that, and fresh start, and the sticker's been there.
Are you disputing that the sticker is there now?
Well, what's the last, what's the last date you have on that list?
January 4th.
January 4th.
That is the date that they said the photo was, photo was taken, January 4th.
Okay, and that's this photo that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that was not clear from the side.
Well, at that point, you said, this was after you met with Liz, you said the sticker was right here.
Since we saw Elizabeth, the sticker has been right on the outside, period. I don't know when we saw it.
I'm certainly agree, that photo does not show...
Does not show a sticker.
Absolutely not. I don't know when that photo was taken, but certainly...
The sticker was on the side, if it wasn't taken there, it was on the side, on the inside side, and then we put it on the outside, and it fell off.
Okay, Art, you've got a picture where you can show us the date?
Yeah.
Bring it up.
I didn't know how to get the, the date and the time on those printouts.
Okay, so that's the picture, and that's January 4th, 902.
Is that, that's the scene?
That's this picture.
January 4th?
Yep, and there is...
At 9:02.
9:02 AM, and there is no sticker there, and actually, well, you can't see it from that perspective, whether that one's still there or not, but, yeah, so that's his.
Yeah.
So that was taken on January 4th in 902.
Yes.
Thank you. So... Can we take a five-minute recess? Do you need to think?
Well, I just have a couple comments, I guess. Certainly, public service is difficult, and end up dealing with situations that can get kind of hot, and I totally respect the work of our people at the transfer station, and I know they have a tough job, and I know that sometimes they catch some abuse for doing what their job is. I, I don't fully understand when there was a sticker and wasn't a sticker, not a sticker. I would hope that, having had this discussion, at least we've aired concerns on both sides, and I would hope that if there is in fact a sticker there, where it's supposed to be, affixed to the outside, that we could just go merrily forward, certainly. If at any point there were any more violations, I would totally be in favor of revoking privileges, but I would hope that maybe this meeting and this opportunity to air what was going on, that we could just move forward from here, knowing you were in compliance, and that the work of the transfer station people could be respected, and, and that equally...
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes.
Hold on.
Doesn't the January picture show no sticker?
I, I, I don't quite understand what's going on. I mean, we clearly were on television, recorded now, having this discussion, and it feels, it feels to me like we've been assured that there is a sticker in the right place.
Photographs don't lie.
Huh?
Photographs don't lie, do they?
I mean, I fully acknowledge, on the other hand, what Art and Harry have to do day after day, and week after week, and, you know, we sit up here taking abuse too sometimes, and it's a challenge, and I utterly respect their work.
I don't, it's difficult all around, I'm not trying to accuse anyone. Pictures can be taken of pictures, I don't know what to say. On a personal note, we own land in Kingston, and for senior, we would only have to pay $90 for a sticker. So it's not about that, it's about this, this, right?
Can I turn on the parking light right now?
Yeah.
Can we go out and see, and I'll be a...
Well, let's us, let's finish up in here. John?
You know, I, in some ways, this really irritates me, because we're taking up time, and I know a lot of the people that are here, we don't get paid, you know, we do this for the love of the town. If the sticker is affixed, and it's permanently affixed, and it's going to stay there, so be it. But if it's, I don't like the idea of playing games, if that's what this is about, whether it's inside the car or outside the car. So if the sticker is firmly affixed now, I'd like to know that.
It's been out waiting six, eight weeks in that spot, and that's where it's been.
Just to make sure I did put a flashlight, anyone is welcome to go on the side. You don't remove the currently affixed sticker.
Well, we've got some 800 to 1,000 stickers out, and we have to know they're on the car. These guys do a good job, because they're, you know, they, they've got a lot going on down there, especially on a weekend when things are really booming.
Definitely.
I never came to that type of dump, not a car, it's always been the tree. And that's where the sticker was for six, seven weeks, and before that it was on the side. The picture is more forward on that picture, and that's where it was on the inside, and I put it on the outside, it blew off, and if you're looking, I had to buy a new sticker.
So we got to move on.
Yeah, we do. I mean, the sticker should have been adhered from day one, on the outside of the vehicle, like it's supposed to be, and we're crystal clear on that, that that's the criteria. It's not going to be taped, not on the inside, so it's been there for six to seven weeks, it should have been there the whole time. And had it been, we wouldn't be talking here today.
The difference is, it's on the inside and the outside, and I put it on the outside.
It's not allowed on the inside, it has to be on the outside.
I know, and I put it on the outside, it blew off, then I, then I had to order another sticker, and then it's been where it is now.
Right, which is great. It's visible, it's in a, it's a visible location. But we do have an image that shows that after we spoke, that it's not on the vehicle.
I don't know when that picture was taken. I never went to the dump without a sticker. I probably bought one of the first stickers like in February, when they first started selling them. I've always had a sticker on the car. Maybe it was on the inside, but it was on a side window, and that's where it was. And you don't have a picture of the front of my side, rear side window?
No, I just have the side angle by the tire.
Before.
Okay. All right, so are, are we going to go look to see if it's on there now, or, do you feel like that's...
Sure, let's do it.
Necessary? Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we take a five-minute recess, but Rob's going to say something first.
If they do continue to have dump privileges, can I personally fix it on their car where it's supposed to be? And then there's no problem, and it's moved from that spot, we will all know?
Great idea.
If they do continue to get privileges?
Well, if it's on, if it's on there, on the back window, it's affixed correctly.
I would stop a further argument if I personally fix it on there.
No, but I mean, if it's on there now, it's glued on.
But that's only valid for a short time.
Oh, the next day, okay.
If you continue to have privileges...
Would you guys be willing for...
Everyone's variable out of the equation.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
All right, and Rob?
Yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable, because then we'll know if it's been.
Okay, all right.
And you are?
I am, I have a superintendent, yes.
He absolutely is, okay. All right, so I made a motion to take a five-minute recess, so do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? We'll be back in five minutes. All right, so the sticker is adhered. As long as the sticker continues to be adhered, and the transfer station policies are adhered to, then, in my opinion, it seems fair that the Lucheskis should be able to use the transfer station for the remainder of the life of the permit. But I also want to be crystal clear, if there's any more incidents, that I think that we need to... need to look at this again and reevaluate, and there could be penalties, including loss of use of the transfer station. But it seems like we're in compliance now, that everyone is crystal clear on as to what the expectation is regarding the, the transfer station. So, are, are you guys okay with?
Yeah.
With that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't think we need to take a vote or anything, do we?
No.
It's just, let's put this behind us, and, and hope that we don't have to talk about this again.
I would hope that we, that the relationship or the interactions at the transfer station can be done with dignity and respect, and albeit, tempers can flare sometimes, that they can be kept under control, and understood that everyone's working hard to make the transfer station work.
Yeah, and it, the, they have a challenge, because people are always trying to dump things they shouldn't be dumping, so, it's not a really fun assignment to be working at the transfer station. There's a lot of enforcement that they have to do to ensure that the rules are followed, and to keep us safe, and that we aren't experiencing fines from people dumping things that they're not supposed to be dumping. So, let's, so, thank you for the job you're doing, it's absolutely appreciated, and let's move forward and put this behind us.
I recognize what you say, I do agree, they don't always have the easiest job, make sure it's only affected, we feel, it's personal, so, so, that's behind us. We have agreed publicly and personally to a superintendent that when we purchase the sticker, he can adhere it to our vehicle, so there is no question. Finally, I certainly want to thank the board for listening. There are always two sides to every story, and we certainly have ours, and we are honorable, are bright people, we've lived in the town, we have never had an issue. But again, not to repeat, I do know that it has a challenging job. In the protocol of where the stickers should be fixed, they should say to the outside of the vehicle, that's what the town of Kingston has, our town just not say outside, even though by default we stick, you would have to put it on the outside technically, you know, it doesn't say that. But again, thank you.
Thank you, okay. All right, so, let's move on, because we've got some hearings here. Thank you all for coming in. All right, so, 6:30, we have a public hearing for a right of first refusal on Lake Street, so, let's get moving on that.
All right, so, we have two public hearings before us, both related to Chapter 61A, right of first refusal. These public hearings are a little bit more formal than some of the things we do, and we'll open this, well, with a couple of ground rules. Anyone that speaks, we'd like them to clearly state their name and their address. So, our first task is to make sure that proper public notice was done, and we did have notice of public hearings for each of these that appeared in the January 3rd and the January 10th issues of the Plumbton Halifax Express. So, I'll go ahead and read the public notice. The notice for our 6:30 public hearing is as follows, and forgive me for having to read all this, but part of the process. In accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14, notice is hereby given that the town, that the Plumbton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the main meeting room at Plumbton Townhouse, 5 Palmer Road, Plumbton, regarding the proposal to exercise the town's right of first refusal to purchase plus or minus 20-acre portion of the parcel of, parcel of land totaling 119 acres, described as Lake Street, Plumbton, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, as more particularly described and a deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds at Book 6507, Page 273, the property, and known as Assessor's ID Map 3, Lot 3-2-8. The property is owned by the Hardjuk Brothers Cranberries, Inc., the owner. The Board of Selectmen will consider whether the town will exercise the town's right of first refusal pursuant to General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14. The notice of intent to sell and the accompanying documents submitted to the town by the owner may be reviewed at the town's clerk office located at Plumbton Townhouse during business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may appear at the public hearing at, at the time and place designated above. So, what we are doing tonight is the Board of Selectmen are considering whether we want to exercise our right of first refusal. A couple steps in this process. We'll have anyone that wants to speak in favor of the Selectmen exercising their right of first refusal. After that, a chance for people to speak against us exercising that. After that, we'll close the evidentiary part of the hearing, and then we'll go to a deliberation and potentially a vote tonight. As we received the application on this process, the various boards and committees also received the same application, and the Board of Selectmen did go ahead and request particularly from the Community Preservation Committee, the Water Commission, the Agricultural Commission, the Historical Society, Open Space Committee, Conservation Committee. We did ask whether any of them had a, and the Planning Board had a recommendation to us on whether to exercise or not. My understanding is we did not receive any comments from any of the boards or commissions in that regard. So, at this point, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the Board of Selectmen exercising their right of first refusal?
I say.
Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak against the Board of Selectmen exercising their right of first refusal? Okay, so, we'll close the evidentiary part of the public hearing, and we'll go into deliberation.
So, I, I do know what I'd like.
I'm, I would not be in favor of us exercising our right of first refusal on this parcel.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal on this property, and sign the appropriate paperwork.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one.
Last one, too.
I wonder if we can waive the reading of this and just note that it's all the same words, but in this case, it's for a public hearing at 6:35 regarding 17 acres of 123 acres described as Main Street. All right with that? Similarly, we did not, we solicited input from boards and commissions throughout town, did not receive any, so, we opened the, the evidentiary part of the hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor of the Board of Selectmen exercising their right of first refusal? Hearing none. Is there anyone that'd like to speak against the Selectmen exercising their right of first refusal? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the deliberative part of this session.
I feel the same way, we should not.
Right of first refusal. I agree, I'm not inclined to, I would like to decline our right of first refusal on this parcel.
And make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal on this parcel.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting, sorry that we ran a little late.
All right, so, we have some documents to sign. Sorry to be a little formal on that, but it's the pleasure of.
Who wants a second on that?
Can I come back for a couple of weeks, 30 days?
I can, I need to make copies, and then I'll mail the original to who it's addressed to, and I'll send you, I'll scan it and send you a copy.
Okay, terrific. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
John, where are you the second on?
I'm second on both of those. Okay, let's move to Gatra.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Do you have to close this hearing?
You already did.
Yeah, you did, okay.
We closed the hearings already.
Thank you.
Do you want me to move on to Gatra?
Yes, let's move on to Gatra.
So, John and I participated in a meeting with State Representative Kathy Minatra, Senator Michael Brady. A representative was also present from the town of Halifax, but the main person there was Frances Gay, who was the administrator of Gatra. I believe his last formal day on the job is today, he's retiring, but he will be staying on board with them for a short time to help with transitional items. The outcome of that meeting was that it would really only require a simple Board of Selectmen vote if we wanted to apply for membership to Gatra. I did verify with legal counsel that that was all it took, and that there's no town meeting approval required. And what that will do, would, if you were so inclined to take said vote, that would go to them, along with the support letter that we received from the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce for us joining them, and then they would likely hold a board meeting sometime in February, in which they would vote to act on our request. Part of this, we would be paying for our membership via the money that we already expend on the assessment for MBTA. Just by requesting membership with them, they don't automatically receive those funds from us. We could apply and become a member and not do anything with it for a while. We could take some time and explore various options, and that seemed like what they were kind of encouraging us to do, was they said, if you go forward with this and you become a member, they would assist us with some staff time to basically look at what our level of service would be, where the demand lies, and then they would help us come up with a plan to accomplish that. But this is really the first step, is applying to them to become a member, city or town, of that organization. So, that's, that's where we're at. John had circulated a map at one point, and it showed the majority of southeastern Mass, yes, the majority of southeastern Mass in the South Shore, they are Gatra communities. So, basically, if we became a member, Plumbton would become shaded in there. As far as partnering with Halifax, I still think we should explore that, but I think the first step here, from my perspective, is getting us established as a member with them, and that doesn't cost us anything, and then we can see if Halifax is interested in applying. If they are, it might make sense to look at those metrics and that level of service as well, maybe come up with a combination effort, but if not, I still think it's worthwhile for us to join that network, so.
Right, I agree.
I agree, too. One of the things is, we pay a $20,000 assessment for the MBTA, and under, if we were to join, that $20,000 immediately goes towards Gatra. So, it's not costing us a penny more, and out of the $20,000 would come this person who would come in, a consultant, to be able to help us with the alternatives. One of the things we don't know is, you know, how does this work? What's the cost of it? I know we have some people in the audience who are interested, and I've certainly got a lot of feedback from the seniors about the need for transportation. Interestingly, too, I heard the, on the radio, the Senate President talk, and she mentioned that regional transit authorities are clearly one of the main things they want to see funded. So, it sounds like this is an opportune time to get involved, and I think it makes perfect sense.
Great. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, you want to start first? I've been waiting nine years for transportation. When I was in 7th grade, I had a brain tumor move, and I lost my whole peripheral vision, and I can't drive, so I had to rely on my parents. I used to have to rely on my sister, too, but she moved down. So, I don't really have freedom, and I've seen the bus go by our street coming from Kingston, and it, like, always kind of stings a little, because I'm like, there's my freedom going right by. And I got into college, and my mom drops me off every day, so, and I, I have an internship, and my mom has to drop me off at that, and so, I just really want that freedom.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm Emily Hayes, I'm 21.
We tried unsuccessfully.
I also wrote an article for the town thing, and a letter to the editor.
Great.
Yeah, I did see that, it was well, well done.
I'm Susan Hayes, and, no, I'm the mom, CEO, transportation specialist at the house. Yeah, I'm a Suber. We've been, I've been trying to work on this for quite some time, because who wants their mother driving them to college? And we were, we were suggested to go to Mass Rehab for transportation services, they don't provide it. I called Gatra, and they said they don't provide to Plumbton, because we don't pay into it, and we also didn't have a contract, so, they said there's nothing we could do. And, you got that? One company that we would be driving someplace, and we'd see some sort of transportation service, and we'd write the number down, and I would call. And I actually had one place call all over the place without me even asking, and they called back, and they couldn't find anything to help us out. And, you know, under the Americans with Disability Act, she should be able to get At the time, I had called Tom Coulter's office, and they suggested that she get disability. So, we've applied for it, she's now receiving it, I called Gatra, still can't do anything. So, at that point, when Tom Coulter was, you know, there, he couldn't do anything for me, and his administrative assistant, I think, looked around to some options as well. The Mass Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired could not help us, she's not visually impaired enough for that to help us. Yeah, and then I ended up having to leave my job. I had a part-time job for 16 years. I just couldn't take her to school, drive to work, pick her up, come home, and then function and get the house in order and live. It just, it wears on you a lot. So, I'm now unemployed, and I'm a Suber. And I put about seven, I figured out about 72 miles a week to get her to her school, and then another 40 to get to Tottenham twice a week for her internship. So, this is, you know, something that we really need to, to get. The town, there's probably others that, I mean, I, I worked on this, the best that I could, and with my knowledge, and, and there's other people who can't do that, and I'm sure there are many in the town and in Halifax that could really use this. And I know with her friends who are in the city, they are able to get a MyRide, and there's also a program they have, I think it's, they're testing it with Uber, where they get so many rides with Uber, which is great for certain things when the T's not running on schedule, or the rides run late. So, she still has another year and a half at Bridgewater, and then hopefully on to Masters in Boston, and it would be nice for someone to just get her to the transportation.
I'm going to try and, gotta do all the things besides school.
Right, yeah, she'll do, she's.
I could do something during summer.
Yeah, she can, you know, go to mom, go to a friend's house, you know, without me driving her, and, 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 so, it's really, it's.
Well, this is.
I can add just a little bit to the ad bellies here.
Um, you know, it's really about Emily's ability to take care of herself as a 21-year-old adult. And we can all rely on family and friends and whatnot, but there is, you know, a service in our government that allows for this and, you know, appreciate the efforts that have come about so far. Lots of folks have looked at it and it just kind of keeps going around in circles. So it seems like we have an opportunity here, you know, get into that membership as a first step. And, you know, we want to just keep pressing forward thereafter to, you know, capitalize on that moment in time that we seem to have here. There is sort of an air out there that, oh, transportation is clearly a big issue in the Commonwealth and so this is our opportunity for Emily to be free as an adult, as one representation in town of people that need their freedom. Certainly seniors and others have those issues also. So, you know, we appreciate that effort that you've put forth so far and we're, you know, looking forward to seeing what other opportunities we can keep, keep with.
And, and also if there's something we could do if you need her to come or myself come and talk?
I like volunteering at things, I like telling my story and everything. Um, I feel like I've done a lot for the town too, I volunteer a lot at elementary school and, um, I always liked living in elementary school.
And she is studying social work, so.
I want to become an art therapist.
Very nice. Well, thank you for coming and telling your story. It's nice to personalize this and to realize, I mean, we all know how important this is because we have other people that are contacting us and emailing us that I can't get to my doctor's appointment or I can't get to work. So we realize that there is definitely a need and it's very brave of you to come in and share your story. So, thank you very much.
This is going to be a long road, you know, we're just starting out, we don't know cost, et cetera. I will say that both Senator Brady from Brockton, who covers our area, and Representative Kathy Lenatra have just been great about getting behind this. I really don't think the meeting would have happened unless they were sitting there themselves and I think that's going to help us. So it does feel like it's maybe the right time to be striking.
Especially too, everyone's moving down this side, you know. You know, I don't know how much bigger Plimpton gets, but it was still, you know, I think some services with certain people, you know, would help. Even if, you know, your car breaks down, you know, and it's being repaired and there's not another car for a couple of days, to be able to call up or hop on the bus to get to Market Basket or whatever, would be a huge help to anyone.
We may be calling on you to.
Yeah, to help, once we start to get moving and.
I would be more than happy to talk to, I, I enjoy, I'm a gay with myself.
You know, so more than happy to speak up and, you know, again, put a face to all your efforts.
Great.
That would be helpful.
That would be very helpful. And when we start to hopefully get to the point where we're talking about service levels and what the needs are, we'll probably end up putting some sort of ad hoc group together to determine what the actual need is because I don't think, you know, we know how great the need actually is and what the hours and days of the week that, that we would need assistance, so.
We'll probably have three members of the committee.
Right there, exactly, there's half the committee.
Almost.
I feel as though it's like if we applied to be a member but didn't really like act on like actually getting any like services yet, I feel like that would almost be like a waste because we are already paying.
$20,000.
Yeah. At that point, I'm annoyed that we're not here anymore and we wait and.
But there, there'll be other people. No, no. So. More to come.
More to come.
We're just starting, we're, yeah, signing the dotted line and just, this is just the beginning.
Okay, actually, we have finally, there's.
I know.
Right at the end of the tunnel.
We hope. It's been a long time.
The way I had wrote it, I wasn't sure if Christine were to call for the vote, I had John making the motion and Mark seconding.
Okay, all right, I'd like to.
But see where it's in italics, that would be the language to use if you're so inclined to vote.
Yes, I think we are. So, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote the following. The town of Plimpton hereby requests to become a member, community of the Greater Attleboro Taunton Regional Transit Authority, GATRA, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 6, 161B, as amended by Chapter 123 of the 2006 Economic Stimulus Bill.
Do you need a second?
All right, second the motion, sorry.
All right, all in favor?
Was that like, wake up?
That's your line. Great, well, this is exciting.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks, real, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so.
Does that, can I get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
So, warrants paid. Do you have information on that?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Two different ones here with totals at the bottom.
Okay, so warrants. Town building maintenance, looks like $1,734.66. Another town building maintenance, $3,269.50. It looks like these are for a variety, Verizon, Eversource was the first one, second one is, looks like paint, Eversource, Verizon bills, all right. Third one is also out of town building maintenance, this is Santoro's, this would be to feed our painting crew upstairs, $108.60. And then the last bill is also town building maintenance, $1,097.76. For coast maintenance, I think that's probably associated with upstairs, is that coast maintenance upstairs?
The coast maintenance is all the supplies that we buy, the cups, the toilet paper, the hand towels, the wax for the floor.
Consumables, okay, for the townhouse building. Looks like this has got a Comcast bill, so a couple of US Bank, looks like police and one for the selectmen, and a locksmith. So, those are the warrants paid. All right, we open annual and special town meeting warrants.
Yes, so if you take a vote to open those, and I was chatting with Greg Corbo and, because I was looking at our March meeting schedule, based on our bylaws, the warrants close the last Monday in March. And he said that all along, you don't need to vote to close them, he said they automatically do based on the bylaw.
Okay, so we just need to open it, okay.
We just need to open it and then they automatically have the closure on that last Monday in March.
Okay.
So if you take a vote to open both, I can send something out tomorrow and let people know if they have stuff, start sending it in.
Start bringing it in, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we open the annual and the special town meeting warrants for fiscal 21.
Wow.
I know, already, man, where's the time go?
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minor technicalities, so if it automatically closes, that's at midnight on that day?
You know something, our bylaws don't specify a time, so I would be inclined to accept anything received with a date stamp of that last Monday in March, which I believe is March 30th. And he said the only technical point that we would have would be, we can't receive stuff after that date.
30th, all right, so you have until midnight.
For those procrastinators.
Actually, they don't have until midnight because there'd be no one here to receive it.
Right, unless they email it electronically.
Okay, okay.
All right, contract for professional services, Housing Choice Grant.
So this is for the Housing Choice Grant that we had applied for in connection with the consultant that had helped us out at the time with the MVP thing and everything. So this is for the grant for $93,000, Housing Choice, and this is for the consultant to eventually work with the Town Properties Committee, which is our Town Center Campus Committee, more on that in correspondence. But this is basically, our idea for this is that the consultant would work directly with that committee to establish the master plan for our town center area and hopefully look at integrating some housing opportunities here. So this contract would be between the town and the consultant, but it would also, we would put them directly in touch with that committee and run it similar to the police station project where the OPM was basically, for all intensive purposes, reporting to that committee and then could report back to us when needed. So, this is the next step of that contract process.
So, do we need to make a motion to sign this?
I would, just so that it's clear. So that would be, and we could do it effective today's date, but I just, I want to verify, we can't send it back to them until we've figured out the funding. Because generally when you enter into a contract, the town accountant's supposed to sign off that the funds are available. And we were communicating with the Housing Choice people, they have all of our documents, but we're waiting to get the fully signed version back and find out about first payment. So I just want to make sure on that part before we send it along.
And this contract is with Beta Group?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll make a motion that we sign the Housing Choice Grant, working with the Beta Group for the, the funding that the, the town received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then this one's just signed by me?
Yeah.
And it's in there, it's a not to exceed amount of the, the grant funding, so they know what we have to work with. They actually helped put together the whole budget for the grant, so.
How much was it?
$93,000.
Yeah, nice grant.
That's going to be just so needed.
I would date it, your date that you're signing, the 27th, and then I'll coordinate with the treasurer's office on the financial.
Okay. All right, so next item, BOs process relative to budgets in the finance committee.
So, this is kind of Liz and I talking. One of the things that became clear, if you watched the FinCom meetings, as they go through the budget process, that oftentimes a line item will reflect one person and they talk it through, where another line item may just be salaries, let's say for the highway department. And it just seems to me that we should be doing this in executive session, for the people who report up to the Board of Selectmen, that rather than, we should go into executive session, have a list of all the people that we're looking at in the budget, what their ranges are, et cetera, and that we then make a decision, that Liz would carry forth, to the finance committee and ask them to do the same thing. Rather than go through departments and talk about people on camera, that it'd be done in the executive session. Because I just don't feel it's right for somebody, let's say they do board health, okay, and they talk about Kathy Ferguson. Well, they may call it the agent or the assistant, administrative assistant, but everybody, not everybody, but a lot of people know what that means. Yet when they talk about highway, there's no breakdown of how that's done. So I'm just saying that I think it's time we made a little change in the budget process. Liz now is pulling all these numbers together. I think last year was a kind of learning curve of how do we move forward. Now we're more advanced and that it behooves us, the selectmen, to get more involved in this, with Liz making the recommendations as to what she thinks we should be looking at.
So I, one point to that, I think John and I are on the same page with this. It is problematic to be talking about individuals or where you have position titles that are only occupied by one individual and kind of getting into the ins and outs of whether or not they deserve a merit-based increase or what percentage. From the executive session angle, the only thing is, I did a little bit further research, this board would be well within your right to hold a purpose two executive session, we could even do it before the next meeting on February 10th, and I could have the list ready to go, we could bump down the list because that's considered negotiating with non-union personnel. That falls under that category and I think we can say that with certainty. Where I think we will have the problem is requiring FinCom to do that because they're not technically negotiating or in a decision-making position as far as what increases anybody would getting. Do you know what I'm saying? Like they wouldn't be able to do a purpose two because they have no negotiating position or power over what these people are getting.
Do we know that for a fact?
Yes, they're not the appointing authority.
No, no, but I mean.
Yes, I had verified that.
So they can't go into executive session then?
For that purpose, to talk about individual merit increases, I would argue, number one, that it's not their role, but beyond that, that wouldn't be a legitimate executive session purpose for them.
The problem is that in fact they do.
I think that that's what we need to work on. I think that for our next meeting, if we did an executive session, went down, you know, you tell me your thoughts with everybody and then I reflect those numbers in the budget submissions to them, but I think we need to have a separate discussion maybe with their chairperson and say, you know, it's problematic that you're kind of getting into the nuts and bolts of all of this stuff. The budget submission is the budget submission and obviously they're making a recommendation on that. But I would argue that their role stops and they don't have the human resources or the executive level function, whatever you want to call it, to be getting into the nuts and bolts of, oh, this particular person, why are they getting a 2% merit or why this person should only get a 1? That's not really their role, that's the appointing authority's role and whoever's in the supervising capacity of said people. And I don't think they want to get into that role necessarily, but I think sometimes the tone of the meetings can be a little.
Negative.
Or loose.
Yeah. Just one thing I would change, I would like you to come forward with the recommendations to us.
Right, and I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that and I'll be prepared to do that for our next meeting.
So, I, I understand the rationale and I totally agree how it can be uncomfortable doing this on camera. If we haven't explicitly checked with town council, I think we need to check on this.
I did check, but I put more emphasis on whether or not FinCom would be able to and that, no, it's not a legitimate executive session purpose, but if it's a negotiation piece with non-union personnel, it doesn't have to be a collective bargaining unit. And all the people we're talking about are non-union people, there aren't that many. It's really like department heads that are reportable to you.
My, my concern is that, yes, reason two is about negotiation, but it sounds like this could get into a discussion about the merit of the person and at that point.
That's a problem too, because that's, that's more like a purpose one, where you'd have to notify somebody.
Exactly, and once we get into purpose one, discussing the merits of the person or the deficiencies of the person, then there's a whole separate process.
Right, correct.
In terms of inviting them, inviting council and I, so I think we need real clarity and I think I'd like it in writing.
I would like it in writing.
From town council on at what point have we moved from a two to a one?
From a two into.
Right.
And they do encourage you to do most of the stuff out in the open, as uncomfortable as it may be. And I could say to that, as far as FinCom goes, just kind of pointing out, let's, when we can, try to keep it about the position and not about the person, you know, not referring to people by name or anything like that. But I agree with what you're saying 100%. And we also don't want it to take on a negative connotation. I mean, all the employees here are doing a fantastic job, we have a bunch of hardworking people here that are keeping things running every day, so I wouldn't want it to take on a negative, a negative feeling or people to think that, you know, we were looking at individual merits. I think what John was trying to do was provide some protection to these employees a little bit so that they don't watch a, you know, a meeting on tape and they're saying, hey, wait a minute, like why is so-and-so picking on the number of hours I work or questioning my motivations for being employed by the town?
Totally agree, understand that. You know, interestingly enough, just in, in a general level, I think frequently these discussions are about, geez, our hands are tied and we can't reward this person as much as we'd like, just so the public doesn't think we're constantly, you know, looking critically at everyone. I think this is a natural outgrowth of where we sit, rather than just have a merit so-called 2% across the board, we talked about performance reviews, et cetera. And this is in a way, this is one segment of the. this is, in a way, this is one segment of this. I think, we wouldn't be doing this, quite frankly, if the town administrator wasn't here.
No.
We wouldn't have the time, et cetera. But this is a part of the professionalization of the governance.
And I agree, and as long as Town Council's okay, it's fine. I just, we want to stay out of trouble.
Let me contact them again, and really run through where we're at, and make it very clear that we don't want to have an issue with a Purpose One versus Two, or a Two versus something that should happen in an open session.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I would be really, I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because I'm not sure where the line is myself.
And I don't want to speak for the Finance Committee either. I mean, they have a very difficult job to do, and I think that they all do it incredibly well. And I think that the arrangements has worked very well with them. I feel like I have a good working rapport with each member of that committee. It's more so in also looking out for them as well, like, protecting the employees, but also, I wouldn't want them not having the ability to contact Town Council at a moment's notice, maybe say something that they didn't intend for it to be perceived as a negative, but something comes out that way. And also, just kind of define the roles a little bit better, as far as who's doing what, and.
Well, it's nice that we review it, because it's another set of eyes, where it's not just coming to them, where they feel like they have to do the vetting. It's come to us.
Correct. And then I can be firm, too, in my position. It will be helpful for me, even from a professional development perspective, so that I'm not sitting there talking to them, and they're saying, okay, and their, their appointing authority wants this or that, and I'm like, well, I think so. Like, I need to know also where this board stands on certain things.
Good, yeah. So it doesn't need to be an elaborate opinion, just.
Right, just basically outline the boundaries for us.
And what we can talk about. Perfect. All right, that sounds good. So when is our next meeting?
February 10.
Okay, February 10.
Five thirty.
You know, I'm.
Is that?
I'm going to be gone, but I would suggest you guys continue, so that we don't fall behind.
Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
I think we should.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just a busy time.
Yes.
In case something comes up while you're gone, I don't want to go all that time without.
Would you rather move a meeting up? Would you just make it the 3rd or something?
We, so the 3rd, I mean, depending on your availability, you could do that. I would just mention, we do have that public listening session.
Yeah, we've got that public listening on the 3rd.
For the MVP grant that I sent up the thing for.
And that's in this room, isn't it?
It is in this room.
What time is that?
Six thirty.
That's at 6:30. And it's basically for them to present.
I mean, if you wanted to just meet at 5:30.
Do you want to meet at 5:30 and skip the 10th?
Just 5:30 executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need an open meeting.
And all we're going to do is do that, and then.
Go through this and.
Perfect. Okay, so let's do that then.
All right, so February 3rd at 5:30.
Perfect.
And then we'll forego the 10th for now, and if something major comes up.
Right, perfect.
So that would be, instead of meeting on the 10th?
Yeah, we would not be meeting on the 10th.
Oh, wait a minute.
What's on the 10th?
No, the 10th, I had set up the dispatch people to come in from The Rock. Do you want me, I can move them, or we could still have the, why don't we just have The Rock folks come in on the 10th? Christine, are you upset to miss, I could move them to the 24th.
You don't.
Christine's like, please, no, I could move them to the 24th.
What is, what is it at the 10th?
The regional dispatch.
They're going to come in and explain why it costs so much. Explain why it costs so much, so I have complete confidence in you two, asking them all the right questions, you three, asking them all the right questions, to find out why our bill went up, $50,000.
A hundred and fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry, $150,000.
Oh, up there.
All right, perfect. All right, so that sounds good. All right.
So are you going to keep the 10th, or are you going to do that on the 2nd?
We'll keep the 10th, okay. But it will be a very short meeting, I think just The Rock. All right, social media presence.
Okay, so I put this on, because one of the things that seems to me is, we're missing an opportunity. Fire is constantly on social media. It's really given them, people just talk about them like, they're great, you know, they love it. Police is starting to, I've noticed that the DA program is being, pictures are on there. And I just think we should have more visibility, because people don't tune into this per se, but if you have something short with a picture, it's going to have a picture that stops them and says, okay, okay. We should be thinking about, you know, it's sort of like when we did the pancake breakfast. That was good. And as we do things, it doesn't have to be the three of us in total all the time, it could be just one thing. So I'm just pushing that out, and I'd be glad to kind of hot show some ideas, and then get your feedback on whether we want to do that.
So are you seeing that as like a weekly update?
I don't know if it's weekly.
Or just highlight?
Maybe as things come. I have a little pet project, which is getting these fire signs around town. And you have one in front of your house, and if I had a picture of you standing beside it, I'd be glad. I'd be glad to put that. Something's up with them about. But there may be other things.
Well, it'd be nice to say that, you know, that we signed, we're in agreement with GATRA, the town's exploring.
Exactly.
And then that, I'm sure, would generate, but, you know, I think, yeah, maybe things that come from our meetings, it'd be nice to spotlight maybe one thing.
We could do that. I've been trying to put a little more, I think GATRA will be a huge one. That'll be a big hit. Interestingly enough, people seem to like it, too, when you pepper it with nice things, like the lights at the Highway Department. That one got a ton of likes.
Likes?
Yeah, they lit it up for Christmas, for the holidays. And that photo got more attention than, than my plea for people for the Cultural Council did.
Oh, I bet, I bet. Well, if you would have had a puppy picture with the plea for the council.
I had one of children, like, doing an activity with the state.
Actually, I thought that was quite good, because it stopped people to look and see what was the verb, you know.
Right.
I remember saying, 80% of selling is get-visual.
Yeah.
So we can get visual, that's my.
Yeah, you could even just get the GATRA logo or picture of a bus.
Yeah, maybe we can get a bus and have us all standing by it.
Well, that could take two weeks for that to happen. If you want to do things on a regular basis. Oh, we just go to the bus stop? Oh, my gosh.
John, I think you should be our model.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay.
Where's John today?
Yeah, he's like, where's Waldo? All right, so we're just going to try to work a little bit harder on spotlighting things. Okay. So elected officials meeting.
Okay. This is one that, we have a operations meeting that Liz runs, that is composed of the major department heads, police, fire, highway, council, and you're supposed to be there. And that's to look at the sort of the state of the town, and make sure that they're talking, communicating across the departments. And I think that's very good. We have a separate one, which is the financial team meeting, which is the treasurer, the accountant, the assessor. Liz heads up this one, was recommended by the Department of Revenue, and it sort of allows them to look at the financial health. And I think those are important, that they're done on a constant basis, let's say monthly, so that people know that they're working towards that. But one of the things that seemed to me, that there's issues that arise that are outside the purview of the Board of Selectmen per se, because there are other elected officials, Board of Health, Town Clerk, Planning Board. And that maybe there's a need, not monthly, but once in a while, to have a meeting of the, those heads, to just talk about things, much as the operations meeting. So I'm just proposing it as an idea. I don't know how they would, the other elected officials would react. We tried a communications meeting back a ways, but I don't think we quite had it wrapped together, as far as what the theme was and why you'd want to be in the room. And I think on this, maybe it's something to put a little effort into. So I'm glad to think through some things. I think there is a necessity, I think at times, when I look out at the boards, it feels like maybe we're not all pulling the same way, and maybe just a little more communication and say, you know, here's where we can work together.
That meeting we had with Rich Bowen was really very helpful.
The first one was very good.
First one was good. It may be better to actually have KMP there, rather than Rich, because anything that he says, we have to verify anyway. And I believe we have some allotted time from KP that, you know, we've got hours that they offer us for free, and Greg's right in Carver, so maybe we could do something with the department heads and the elected officials, and just get together kind of around table like we did before, and just chit-chat, and Greg's there, you know, if they've got issues that they want to talk about. It wouldn't need to be a posted meeting, because there wouldn't be any quorums, and it might be beneficial.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think any way to open up communication. I mean, having a theme's probably important, to get them in the door, and give a little direction to the meeting, but just having the communication then, and that kind of bleeds over into the workday, hopefully. So it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if we could do it like on a quarterly basis, or.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
I would like to, the theme of customer service, I would like to ingrate into this whole way we talk about things, because I think sometimes we miss that the only reason we're here is as a customer service to the residents, and the businesses. You know, there's a legal part where you've got to respond to state mandates and all that, but.
I wonder if there's one on, this isn't so much Greg, but, you know, it's an issue that comes up in particular tonight, but in general, is on de-escalation of challenging situations, which is a subset of customer service, and a really important one. I wonder if even a speaker of some type, a trainee, in fact.
That's, that's good. Do you remember years ago, when Paul Scribner was moderator, and we went off-site? He found somebody, a consultant who did that, who, and we spent the day in a room where we wrote ideas on.
Whiteboards and paper.
Paper. Something like that, you know, who knows? But something along those lines, I think that'd be great.
That'd actually be pretty exciting. I mean, I think that's the important part of customer service. We kind of do well on the other end of it.
Yeah. I think it's something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we push it into our goals.
Yeah, I mean, we could have a theme for each one, and, yeah, and, you know, bring in someone who's appropriate for whatever we've chosen to, the theme to be.
I, there's lots of organizations that have people who are skilled in that, that would do it for us, that's for sure. I'm sure Liz could find them. We could ask Kathy about her, she certainly would be willing to do that.
Okay, great, good idea. All right, so town administrator updates.
So I have been communicating with an individual from the state who runs the flood insurance rate map, like that program, and they are updating some of Plimpton's map panels. It has to do with FEMA and the flood insurance program. So they are putting forth an article that will appear on our town meeting warrant, just to update in the floodplain section of the zoning bylaw, which I believe is Section 8.1. In the third paragraph, it lists out all of our map panels by number, and it also lists the effective date of the letter of map amendment, and those need to be upgraded with new information. So he's getting me all of that, and basically wrote the article for me, but it does need to appear. I figured we could be the sponsors of it, because it came to me, but that will have to go through the Planning Board public hearing process, as would any zoning change. But it's very important that that get done, so that people, if somebody's inclined to have flood insurance, or they're required to, they don't want any lapse in coverage, so we need to get that language updated. I also have a follow-up with the people who did that technology review. The conference call has been scheduled and rescheduled multiple times. I believe that's happening on Thursday. John, I'll forward you the time, assuming it stays the same. And then they should be sending us a written report, an end product, just kind of a snapshot of where we're at, in terms of our technology and everything. And otherwise, I've been busy with the budget process, and working on some green communities reporting, and some different things like that. As far as correspondence, we have a notification here. At the last meeting of the Town Center Campus Committee, they had discussed it amongst themselves, and they would like to change their name to the Town Properties Committee, kind of shorten that up a little bit, and also generalize it somewhat, so that it's not only focused here. So I thought that if we ran that by the board, and took a vote, at that point, I'd be comfortable notifying the Town Clerk and letting her know that the name has been changed, but the appointment terms all remain the same.
I'd like to make a motion that we rename the Town Center Campus Committee to the Town Properties Committee.
Okay, well, the scope of what they're doing is greater than just the Town Campus. So I'll second your motion. All in favor?
You have a discussion?
I don't love the name, but I.
But they're doing the work.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm missing, but I'm glad to vote with you guys.
Okay, very good, all right.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, it's not really sparkly, but.
It isn't, it isn't. And it's going to be, I know it'll happen, it'll be TPC.
Oh, shepers.
But, you know, we can rename it again, but let's get further down the road.
Okay.
The only good thing about it is, it tells outsiders what the committee's charter is and so.
Great. Okay, so back to Liz.
We have a bond here for Nancy Magnuson, who is the Assistant Town Clerk, a bond that she's required to have. It's for $6,500. And there is a place on here where it appears that Christine would sign, and it states, this is to certify that the Board of Selectmen has fixed the sum of the foregoing bond at the amount shown there. And in the instructions from Western Surety Company, they said as a formality that.
And what's the bond?
That you would sign here, $6,500. So if you want to take a vote for Christine to sign that as the authorized person from the Board of Selectmen.
Sure, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Chairperson of the Board of Selectmen sign the Western Surety Company bond for the Assistant Town Clerk, in the amount of $6,000.
$500.
Six thousand five hundred dollars.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Reach out here?
Yes, I'm not sure why they have.
Still on vacation, man.
We also have a notice here from Rob Furlough. The snow and ice budget for fiscal '20 has been expended. He's requesting that the board declare an emergency, so that they can continue to provide service.
All right, I'll make a motion that we declare a snow and ice emergency, so the department can, what do you call it, deficit spend, or just exceed their budget?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I know we do it every year, it just, it's bizarre, it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make any sense.
It comes off the cherry sheet. I mean, we don't know whether it's going to be $50,000 or $100,000.
No, I understand, it's just, you know, the language is all followed up. It's just the way it's done, I get it.
We also have here notification that, again, this year, they're doing the Reebok-Ragnar Relay Cape Cod race again. This would be in our area on May 8th and May 9th, but they did not fill out our standard, like, form, so we can just, assuming you're okay with it, we could forward it along to police and fire, and make sure that they are familiar with it.
Do you want to vote on it pending approval?
I would say pending approval.
That's not the election, it's the following.
No, that's May 16th, I believe.
Okay, so it's the following weekend?
And they do have their certificate of liability insurance for the race. So all the paperwork appears in order, but it doesn't have that standard.
Okay, sign on for everybody.
If you wanted to vote, maybe do it, you know, pending favorable response by police and fire.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Reebok-Ragnar Relay to run through the town on May 6th and 7th?
Ah, the 8th and 9th.
Contingent on favorable returns from the necessary secretaries, police, fire, highway, whoever.
Second.
All right. So fast that time. All in favor?
Aye.
And just Plimpton Halifax Express, Ryan Lynch from Situate is our new Assistant Superintendent at Silver Lake, filling Dr. Jill Prue's old role. And there were a lot of great pictures of the Silver Lake indoor staff folks.
Great, thank you. All right, so board goals...
I've got a couple of things. Can I just rattle them off?
Sure, rattle them off.
Because I don't know where they fit.
Okay.
Mark, you might be interested in this. I was watching Chronicle one night and they did a series on, what do you call these, halfway houses or what's the one down here on Brook Street?
Oh, Brook Retreat?
Brook Retreat, yeah.
The rehab type homes?
Yeah. But they said there is a certification from the MASH Alliance for Sober Housing, so they call MASH. And they had a list and they were not on it. And while it's not state certified, I think we should at least ask them if they would encourage them to go that way.
This came up way back at the beginning, when they first started in. And I don't know the details on it, but yeah. And I'm glad to pursue that with them. Could you just email me the name of the organization?
Sure, I will. And I'll give you the link to the website.
I mean, it may not be appropriate for them, but I'm glad to at least make contact.
Talk about it, yeah.
Great.
Packing Lot, at some point, we've got to bring that back in.
Yeah, maybe in February.
Okay.
Do you want it added on, the Packing Lot review?
Probably after the 10th, when you're back.
The following meeting.
Yeah, maybe the 24th would make sense.
I think I've mentioned this before. There is a calendar company that, Verbio, that works with towns to integrate their calendars. Okay, so like, I go on and it says, "Pick your town," and then it comes up and it says, "Okay, calendar, Dennett Elementary School, Dennett Library," and they say, "Fire." And if you click on that, it takes and puts on your calendar on your computer all the things that are going on.
Really?
Yeah. It seems to me if we could get, Plimpton Historical Society has talked about they'd like an integrated calendar because they're scheduling events out over the better part of the year. They want to make sure that we don't have town events that affect them. And I was just thinking Verbio might be a way of doing that, that we put it on. And I'll get you some information, Greg, okay, that you can look at and make sure Liz sees. But it's simple and it just seems well worth trying. If it doesn't work, we won't do it. Finance Committee has a PC that they, they have two PCs. So they've got one, an older one. They say we can repurpose it if we want to use it. I'd like to take a shot with Michael and just, you know, because we lost our computer here. I forget where it went, but...
Fire.
Fire, okay. So we have nothing. If somebody comes in and just brings a disk and wants to show it, it'd be nice to have something we could do.
Okay.
Cultural Council, we know we need members. We don't have one.
We don't have any members.
So I've talked to a few people, but...
Yeah, I've talked to a few people too. It's hard to get them interested.
We have a few irons in the fire, but I'll have to call that woman. I left her a message today and then we exchanged emails. We were hopeful that we'd have some people by this evening to be appointed, but they have not confirmed yet. So I'll have to call her back tomorrow and just say, unfortunately, we don't have anybody as of yet. I'd hate to see us lose that funding, but, I mean, it is what it is. We've got to figure out, I don't know what more we can do to get members. I talked to Debbie about it at the library. She said she'd poke around and try to find people.
I think we just got to go out and put our hands on people.
I wouldn't share it, but I'd be willing potentially to be a member if we get a committee going, just so we don't lose opportunities.
Well, in the event that we weren't able to get members, could this board serve as a cultural council?
I can find that out. I know that their regulations are very particular as far as appointment terms. For example, the same person can't serve two consecutive terms. You need to come off for a year. And they don't operate, or at least they didn't back when I was on one in my hometown. They do not operate on a standard fiscal year basis. There's a lot of like rollover of funds and everything, so it's, I don't know if they would have something precluding or not. I can find out.
Either, but it might be worth exploring because you're right, we certainly don't want to lose the funding and they do a lot of good work with it too.
Seems like the Historical Society, that's a perfect mesh because they're already doing that stuff.
It does seem like they would be a good fit.
It's not a heavy lift in terms of time commitment. There's really only one during the year that you're busy, I can say, from having experience on it. But you do need at least one or two people who, you know, are fully capable of navigating the state's online system. And it also requires quite a bit of effort on the part of town accountants to, because like I said, they don't operate on a standard fiscal basis. And that was one of the pieces I found challenging when I was on it. But that said, it's a really rewarding committee and you're only really busy when you're taking in the applications and then voting on them. And you can say that you took part in awarding funding for some really interesting, unique projects. So it's a nice, it's kind of a feel-good committee.
It is a feel-good committee and it would make sense for like somebody from recreation or pays to be on there, somebody from the Historical Society, maybe one of the library trustees, just some people like that that...
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe those are the people that we need to reach out to. Or somebody from CASA, you know, groups like that, that, a variety of people to come together on this committee because they, there is some neat stuff they do and they get a nice amount of money as well.
They do. And I feel like if people, if people knew that we were in jeopardy of losing it, I think that a lot of people, if they realized that that was what was funding some of these things, like Debbie mentioned, that they do this fantastic painting demonstration at the library with it. And I know the seniors have funded some different performances and everything. It's a little bit of everything. You can even fund school field trips through it.
Yeah, I think we used that in the tercentennial celebration to bring in the Deborah Sampson, the person that portrayed Deborah Sampson. So there is a lot of neat things you can do with that. So maybe we just need to work a little bit longer on it and see if we can get some, get some members.
Okay.
One last thing. The Campus Committee Meeting notes now, Town Properties Committee Meeting notes, came out, so if you're reading those, one thing that struck me is...
They came out?
Yeah.
They release them to us, the minutes.
Oh, okay. Release them to us, the board.
Yeah. So when Colleen Thompson sends them out, she copies the board.
All right, that's happened?
Yep.
Yes.
I must have missed that.
Well, she did the last ones too.
Yeah. Well, she did the first, I did the second, she's the third. She's, she's taken notes of, she's not there, then I do.
Okay.
The only point is, read those over because she...
She does a nice job. She's a great note taker.
One of the things we're looking at is, you know, it looks like we're going to put the lift down in the front, is that the front doors will have to be done over. And we ought to be thinking about if there's an Americans Disability Act grant, like we did for the library for the doors, because that would allow us to have more money to throw at this. So just throwing that out.
So I had to miss a meeting or two. The next meeting, do you know off the top of your head?
February 5th.
Great.
At 6:15.
6:15? Cool.
Awesome.
Making pretty good progress too.
Really good committee.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so is that your list? Okay. All right, so long-range master plan for town campus, we talked about that with the TPC. Senior Citizen Needs Shared Services, Liz continues to work on that. We're right looking at GATRA. Grant acquisition, I'm not sure where we are with our grant writer.
She's, for a variety of reasons, she hasn't been able to put in many hours for us. I think last month it was an hour and a half. So I would suggest that maybe we speak with Colleen Thompson because she was pursuing that coursework in grant writing. And we could have a similar agreement on file with her to what we have with the other one. I don't see any reason why we couldn't have two agreements going at the same time. It's not like...
Right, I mean, they only get paid if they actually do the work.
Correct.
Exactly, okay.
But she was having health problems, so we don't know if those are going to...
Yeah, and she may, right, not be able to do it. Okay, that sounds great. Continue professionalization of town general and financial operations, we talked about that in our upcoming meetings. Volunteer outreach, strengthen town boards, committee boards and commissions, we talked about that with the cultural council. Explore affordable housing opportunities, use the town-owned land and buildings, that's going to be something that...
How did that meeting go that you had?
That was going to be my rant, right, but I'll tell you about it now. I had, I met with Amy Belmore, I think her name is? Bellmore, Amy Bellmore from Habitat for Humanity last Wednesday and had a really good meeting with her. They've got some really interesting programs that I wasn't even aware of. One of them is, oh, what's it called? Where's my notes? Oh, I left it in the car. All right, well, anyway, it's a program where they, I wish I could remember the name of it. They help people do repair work around their home, people that have lower incomes. So they'll actually have somebody come in, if you need to have your stairs repaired, they'll do that. They'll do, you know, if you need to have windows replaced, that type of thing, you know, you have a window that's broken, you need somebody to fix it. So that's a program. They have, as well as the building of the homes, they, we talked a lot about the, in our town, there's certainly a need for, for new families' homes, but also for seniors. It's not typically in their wheelhouse, but they're going to do some exploration as to see what they might be able to do where we could work together for some senior housing. And I'm meeting with Amy and Jim again, one more time to kind of get our act together before we do a meeting here at the board where they come and do a presentation about the different programs that they offer and how we might be able to work together.
Super.
So, some more to come on that. All right, so support town administrators' goals, we continue to do that with the goals that Liz has got. Continue protecting towns' natural resources and unique character. We'll probably be looking at something with the roads, won't we? The reduced speed limit possibly at that intersection?
Yeah, at any point, at any point, we're ready.
That might be something we want to...
We can have that discussion.
Yeah, start to get the ball rolling to talk about that intersection. And encouraging fiscally sound governance, that's something we do all the time. Dates to remember, our next meeting is actually going to be the 3rd at 5:30, which will just be an executive session. That will be followed by a public listening session from 6:30 to 7:30 in this room for the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. And then our next meeting will be on the 10th, which will be a meeting with dispatch from Duck's Ferry to come in and talk to us about that. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting will be the 24th and we'll start at 5:30 there and do an executive session. We may end up even going to like maybe 6:15 again or 6:00 or 6:15, get everything squared away. And... So your two, excuse me, your 2-3 meeting at 5:30 is going to be an executive session? It's just going to be an executive session, it'll probably be 5:30 to 6:30. And then...
You took short maybe?
Yeah, short. Short, short. All right, so then we've got the open session meeting from March 6th and Mark wasn't in attendance, so it's just you and I, John. Did you get a chance to read them?
I did, I did. As usual, I can't put my hands on them. I didn't think I had anything.
I didn't have anything.
I watched you guys on TV, you looked good.
Oh, thanks. All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 1/6 as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mark, you going to recuse?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark recues. Okay, anything else before rants and raves? Okay, all right. Do you want to go first?
I don't.
I'll go.
No, I will, I will. My rant is loose. Little bit brief, that's it.
Yeah.
Rant or rave?
A little of both?
No, no, no. No, did I say rant?
You read rave.
I do mean rave.
Yeah.
Sorry, a little tired.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think my rave would be the, the idea of us getting together and talking about, and tonight was a perfect example about customer service and de-escalating a situation and remembering that, you know, we all are here to serve really each other. Because, you know, the residents need to be respectful of people that, that work for the town and we're here to help the residents. So it's really a relationship where we just need to work together and continue to keep the town, the best interests of the town always at the forefront.
So my rave would be for, I think, the fact that both Senator Brady and Representative Lanacher were willing to come and sit and they drew in Gatter and I think we're on the first step of a long road, but I think it's going to be very good and I'm looking forward to it.
Can I, actually, can I do another rave?
Sure.
The other rave is for you, the work you've done with the special legislation.
Oh, yeah.
That's taken time and you're taking time this week on that and it's very appreciated.
Oh, you're very welcome. Hopefully we're successful. I can't imagine why we wouldn't be, but yeah, so that'll be interesting when we're in Boston. All right, so being that we've got nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.